Good evening. I'd like to open our, our school committee meeting for Tuesday, February 27th, 2018. Mrs. Kennedy, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Duquesne.
Here.
Mr. Cole.
Here.
Mr. Mannan.
Here.
Mayor Holliday.
Present.
Mr. Hawkehiser.
Here.
Mr. Williams. Mr. Callahan.
Here.
Thank you. Could we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Before we begin the budget forum, I'd like to ask if we could hold the students, staff, and community of Parkland quietly in our thoughts for a few moments before we begin. Thank you. Our first order of business here is actually to have our FY19 school budget forum. And I, just for the folks who are here and for the school committee, I just wanted to remind everybody that really the purpose of the forum is to have the district present the preliminary work that the school councils, the principals, and the leadership team have been doing on the budget. This is an opportunity, this is our first look at the budget. It is a preliminary budget. And what we're hoping to be able to do is get some questions answered from the school committee, flag the challenges that we have going forward, and we seem to have them every year, identify some of the changes. This will not be our only opportunity to talk about the budget, both as a school committee and as a community. We do have a budget hearing set for the first meeting in April, at which the community is invited and encouraged to participate. I suspect, given some of the challenges we're facing, the budget will be a topic of conversation going forward at school committee meetings as well. What we're going to ask the superintendent to do is, is to sort of emcee this. What you can expect to hear from us tonight is a discussion about sort of the trends over the last several years in the district financially, demographically. We'll then get the projected budget overview presented to us. There is a shortfall at this point in the budget. We're going to talk about that shortfall and ways to address it. And then we will open up to conversation, or we will open up actually to questions and answers from the community. That will be an opportunity for folks from the community to ask us questions. Again, it is not the only opportunity they will have. Without any further ado.
Thank you, Mr. Mannan. I'm also going to introduce Nancy Lysick, who is my executive assistant for finance and human resources, who is going to be helping me present the information to you tonight. Can you hear me in the back? We're going to start off in, with our trends and in talking about our school choice revenue and what's happened with that. And for this, it's pretty self-explanatory that our school choice has steadily gone down. And our FY19 projected is very little. We're looking at eight students. And we will have further discussion with the school committee about where school choice is and whether or not we are going to be having any openings in school choice as part of the budget discussion. So, but it's clear that there's been significant revenue loss in the area of school choice.
There was a, it's like just, there was a time when, when I first joined the school committee, when Newbury Court had the greatest amount of choice in the state. We had the most known of choice students, which generate considerable revenue for the district. And we are, we are now dramatically different than we were.
And part of the reason for that is that if you think back to some of the history in the district, we have closed schools, we have a finite number of students that really we can house across the district. And we have really been at capacity in all of our buildings. So we have not had an opportunity to really open school choice. We opened kindergarten two or three years ago. Two years ago. We opened five slots in kindergarten and we actually only filled three of them, I believe, or four.
I think three, maybe. There is only one lot.
Yeah. So that's, that's really the only thing that we've done over the last several years in terms of opening slots.
And one thing to note on choice is that we've budgeted roughly $700,000 this year in fund balance. It's going to leave us, if we spend all of it, it'll leave us about $500,000. $250,000 is budgeted for FY19. The remainder, you really don't want choice to fall below $200,000. That's the only money you have to supplement any unknown costs. So if we don't have some revenue input into choice, it will, this will be the FY19, could be the last year that we're able to use upon balance. We've budgeted $250,000, as I said, for FY19. We may be able to increase that a little bit because we have a couple of education students that we've had in this year. So we're looking at increasing it, bumping it up a little bit next year.
In terms of school appropriations from the city, it has been significantly increased over the last several years. Certainly in the time that I have been superintendent, we've seen really significant increases. We've been very fortunate to be able to do that. It's one of the reasons that we have been able to add back some of the staffing that we lost 10 years ago, that we have been able to increase foreign language at the middle school, do a whole host of, of things that the district really needed because we, we've had the support to be able to do that. Special education costs, the charts kind of speak for themselves in that this is an area that is growing. Our special education population, just like the rest of the state of Massachusetts, is increasing. We're finding that we have students with increase, increasing needs. And we've had to add staff in both instructional areas and in counseling areas. And in addition to that, students placed outside of the district, the costs for programs outside of the district have also increased, as has transportation for those particular students. So that's an area that we see, the trend will be increasing in that area.
Just to clarify, are you saying that both the numbers of students that we're serving in special education has increased and the complexity of the issues that we're superseding has increased?
Yes, yes, yes to both.
I have a quick question. Do we know the source of those, of those coming initially? Are they being initiated from parents or are these kids going through RTI processes?
The district?
Yeah.
I'm going to look to Christina to answer that one.
So I'm sorry, are you speaking just in general?
Just in general, like if we're having that big of an increase, I'm wondering, I'm wondering if parents are referring kids because they're struggling? Or if these are kids going through an RTI process and we're working on tier one instruction and maybe tier two supports? And not that I want to look at special ed from an economic perspective, but we know that the stronger those things are sometimes, that might keep numbers from growing so exponentially.
No, that's a great question. And actually, every year, John Clay collects data, the, she's the assistant for the special education department. She does this amazing compilation of data in terms of referrals and breaks it down. I would be happy to share that at the end of this year, and I can share it for past years, and it's really kind of neat to compare. She breaks it down for each school, exactly where the referral source is, if it's parent or school, and the percentage of students who have been found eligible. Generally, it's a mix and you see it vary. So for example, at the high school, there are, there tend to not be very many parent referrals, there tend to not be many referrals in general at that level. A few referrals mostly internal. That can fluctuate from, from year to year. At the earlier levels, it can be more of a mix. But certainly, you know, our RTI, you know, process is robust at every building. But, you know, I think as, as Mr. Mannan pointed out, the, the student needs are becoming increasingly complex. We're tracking crisis referrals, hospitalizations, all of our counselors are keeping a lot of that. And it's something that we continue to see increase.
Thanks.
Next one talks a little bit about the revenue decrease in grants. I started this on FY10, which shows 1.3 million. And you can see it goes up a little bit. And now, the last five years, it's down to about $900,000 in grant revenues. You can see the number of grants that have gone away. We try continuously to apply for new grants. Some we get, but they're small. The one constant is always able. Hopefully that will stay. That's our biggest grant, and Title I.
And, and just a, a point that I'd like to, to add to that. So when we have the grant dollars disappear, then it becomes, it's incumbent upon the LEA budget to pick up whatever those grants were funding, if we want to continue those programs. And in almost every case, we definitely want to continue them. So that's, that's also been a struggle for us. Our enrollment, for the most part, has been fairly consistent over time. We are starting to see a little bit of decline now. We, as I've talked about enrollment in past years, we have years in which we have really consistent enrollment, you know, from third grade to the next third grade. It'll vary by maybe 10 students. But we're starting to see areas in, in our enrollment, particularly now in pre-K, K, where we're starting to see a lessening of students. And that's due to a declining birth rate. It may be due to a whole host of factors. But we are starting to see the trend to go down a little bit. And I expect that over the next five to 10 years, that we're definitely going to see that. And it will hit the high school at some point. Right now, we're still close to capacity at the high school. But what we'll have a conversation about with the school committee later is that the eighth grade class coming into the high school is much smaller than previous classes have been over the last five years. So we have an opportunity there, and that's one of the areas that we'll talk about for school choice. But overall, the trend is that the birth rate is down and that our enrollment is going down, which is, is, it's, it's in one way, a good thing because it may allow us to move dollars into some other areas. The fact that we've had consistent enrollment has also been a really positive thing because we've been, we've been able to plan programs really well because we've been, been consistent from year to year. So, but that's one of the things that long-term, we need to continue to take a look at. Mr. Kindred.
I'm just a little confused. This chart is presented in reverse chronological, chronological order?
Sorry about that. Yes. Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. You're, you're asking.
I have to use the other side of your brain.
Just trying to confuse you.
Checking up on the side.
The next slide, again, this is from a zero increase to a two and a half percent increase, and it, it shows you from 13 to 19. We, we've referenced here two of our unions, the ASME union and the teachers' union. And we do have a third union, which is our teacher assistance, but they are only in their second year of their contract. So there's no really historical data there. So you can see where the percentages have been for both ASME and for the teachers over the last six years. Again, this comes back to the enrollment. You can take a look at the birth rate and what's happening there. You can see at one point, we were at a high of 210, now we're down to 132, and that was in 2015. And that continues to decline. So obviously, when you have, you know, an 80, almost an 80 student decrease over that time, that's at least four classes right there. So, and again, those, when you, when you're looking at births, you're looking at your kindergarten classes. And in preschool and in kindergarten, those are the areas where we're definitely seeing the decline. And that will obviously continue as those classes move through the grade levels. The next, I think three slides, four slides maybe, are just about our energy usage and the trends that we've had in those three areas. And you see it for electricity, for natural gas, and, you know, you can take a look at, I do have to compliment Steve Burgholm, our director of facilities. Steve has done, I think, an amazing job over the years of really trying to really contain costs. And is always tweaking, tweaking these areas and is really trying to do every cost-saving program that he can in order to achieve the best function that we can in terms of cost savings. And I, I just, I think he's done a great job. I'll just let you take a look at that. There are three slides that go along with the energy cost trends. And the last slide in this area is just to give you an idea of some capital expenses that we've had, that are those things that, for those of us who are homeowners, sometimes they just happen, they're unplanned. You can take a look at when they occurred, what they were, excuse me, and the cost of those. And again, you know, those, they range from a low of, you know, $4,000 to a high of $16. And those are things that, when they happen, we have to fix them because it has to do with the district continuing to function. And just a couple of things that I would point out, in the fall of 2017, if you look about three quarters of the way down the page, the east terrace, remove the planters there, we had leaking into a mechanical space, which was impacting our electrical. That was $11,000. And then if you look at the last one, that was again, we had to remove adhesive from the brick. This was also related to that, that same time in the fall of 2017. So that's, right there is almost $30,000. And those are the unplanned events that happen sometimes with a, and a building that has some age to it.
Okay, um, can I ask how we have funded these things?
It's, um, within, within the budget every year, when we have something that is, it's an unplanned expense, we then have to look at where we can move dollars. So we look, we go through the budget. Mrs. Lysick and I will go through and we'll work with the building principals. And we'll say, can you do without this? And we'll actually transfer funds from one area to the other in order to be able to meet these needs. So it may be that we don't purchase textbooks. It might be that instead of hiring someone in September, maybe we decide we're going to move that position and maybe not hire till January. There's been a whole host of things that we've done to mitigate.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you.
I'm going to jump right in and talk about what the leadership team and I have decided that we think are priorities for the coming budget. And they, they amount to 3.7, new positions, if you will, in the budget. Those include a new position at Breznerhand for a school social worker. And that is to address the social emotional needs that we are seeing at that level. That is a new position. We've budgeted $60,000 for that, which would be an entry-level position. We also need to increase preschool instructional assistant point two in order to meet the needs of programming at Breznerhand. At Mullen, we're looking at another special education teacher there. And one of the reasons we're looking at that is that we are going to be seeing a significant increase at Mullen based on the number of students that are coming in from Breznerhand who have in special education instructional hours on their IEPs. We do not currently have enough staff to meet all of the hours that those students require. So we will need to add a teacher at Mullen in order to meet those needs. We have a current point five reading teacher at the middle school. In order to continue our programming needs in this area, we would like to add another half-time to that person to make them full-time. And again, that's due to students moving up who have that service required on their IEPs. At the high school, we would like to increase point two clerical in the front office to move a point eight position to full-time. For any of you who have ever been in the high school, the front office is a very busy place. And we really feel we need to do that in order to continue to meet the needs of both students and parents. And then lastly, we're looking at a point eight combination of math and a STEM teacher to complement and add to the staff we already have in that area. But also, based on wanting to increase our, particularly our STEM needs, that's an area where, as you know, we've been growing at all our other levels, it's now hitting the high school. So we would like to have a combination person who would be certified in, in math and/or STEM, and/or both. And we think that we'll, we'll likely find someone in that area. So the, the 3.7 full-time equivalents in that area amounts to $209,000. And that is new, new staff for, for the schools. And that's across all four schools.
Susan, real quick.
Sure.
The, the special ed hours you were talking about, are those pull-out hours?
They're a combination?
Or co-taught?
They're both, they're both, actually.
They're both, but I believe that the majority consists of pull-out hours. Obviously, you have several students moving up from the Breznerhand who have quite intensive special needs and require individualized programming outside of the general education classroom.
Do we have co-taught classes at Mullen?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
The next slide is just a pie chart of the, the actual budget breakdown. It's a 3.87 increase over FY18. The city appropriation was 3.9. Due to the loss in revenue, we currently, we're looking, and again, this is preliminary, we currently have a shortfall of $588,000. And the pie chart represents to you where we are system-wide.
Where's the pie chart?
In the orange section, Bruce.
What section?
Purpose budget.
In the orange.
No, no, right there, that one.
Susan, the shortfall of 588,000, does that include the increases you're looking for, or is that in addition to?
It includes the increases.
Okay, so it's, it's a shortfall of 370-something plus we would like to increase 209?
Yes, yes, that's, that's accurate, yes. Again, this is a little bit more of a breakdown in terms of the revenue impact, the choice revenue, 56,000. Again, Nancy talked about the available fund balance of $250,000, for a total decrease of 406. Preschool revenue is also down, $64,000, with $14,000 being supplemented from the fund balance. Circuit breaker revenue is down a little over 7,000. And the Title I salary revenue has decreased by 41,000. With the city appropriation increase of 3.9%, the, the decrease of 467,000 results in an overall revenue increase of 2.7%.
2.07.
Points, excuse me, 2.07%.
I was hoping there wouldn't be math, but there apparently is.
There's always math for the budget.
The next one just shows you a breakdown of revenue for the last few years. As you can see, the city appropriation is at 3.9%. Medicare is going up a little bit, but choice is down 40%. The fund balance, we've knocked that down 59%. Title I, down 21%. Kindergarten, down 12.80%. So it brings us to a total revenue percentage increase of 2.07%. On the next page, it breaks down the cost center expenses. Breznerhand's up 2.7, Mullen's up 10.1, middle 3.3, high school 3.8, and system-wide is up almost 3% for a total 3.87% increase from last year.
Nancy or Susan, the spend costs are found in system-wide or are they found in each cost center?
They're found in system-wide, except for the salaries of staff is in the cost center. And a small amount of supplies, but very small. The majority of the cost is in system-wide.
Again, when we talked, uh, earlier this year, when the, the city, city council and the school committee met jointly, we talked about future priorities. And we talked about continuing to expand world language, continuing our pursuit of having safe and supportive schools for all of our students, continuing the work that we've done in the strategic plan in many different areas, our STEM expansion, which continues and is going very, very well, into disciplinary courses at the high school, and continuing our expansion of technology education. The one thing that the, the leadership team has discussed this year is that while we would love to have a second year where we're expanding foreign language, continuing to do that in the middle school, what we've really found is that our need for safe and supportive schools, in particular in terms of counseling and special education services, really has taken over priority. So when I talked about the 3.7 positions, that's really where you see the focus. So that's not to say that expanding and continuing to expand foreign language is not still a priority. It is. But we also were very cognizant of the fact that this was going to be, and it always is, a tight budget and that we need to make choices about the things that we're doing and where we want to put our dollars. And in this particular year, we feel that counseling at Breznerhand is really an area that we need to pursue. And it would be the first time, we're putting forward a social worker, and that's very specific on our part. We have great counseling staff across the district, but we want to continue to expand that. And, and the training for a social worker is different from that of our adjustment counselors and our school psychologists. And it really is more focused on family. And we are finding that families are having lots of complicated needs. And we want a social worker to be able to address that as our youngest students start school. And I would see that that might be a trend that would continue as students move through the grade levels. So I just want to clarify that that's the reason why you're seeing a little bit of a difference in what we talked about last fall and what we're talking about tonight.
Is there any, is there any particular thing that you're looking to assess? You know, would that social workers help? You know, is it related to some social, social emotional things or?
It's, it's social emotional. It's also about being able to connect, to have someone with a, with a broad enough skillset who has connected to the community, who can help family, who can help families get to the resources that they need out in the community. So it's broadening our view.
Do you feel like right now, we're missing some opportunities as a result of not having that person in place?
I do think that we are. And, and while we have, I, I can't And, and while we have, I can't say enough about the counseling staff that we have across the district because they are amazing, I think that being able to start linkages at our earliest grades for families is only going to benefit students as they move through the system.
And I, you know, that's one of the key skills and responsibilities of a social worker is to assess, and, you know, that can, again, if you will, develop a template for services that you can maybe look forward to intervening, or mediating, or helping to support everybody involved. So that makes a lot of sense.
I hate to ask the question, but do we have the list of things that, we followed up a conversation of how short we are in the budget with all the things we want to add? So do we have the, the realist thing that says if nothing else comes our way, we have a lot of money to cut? I know we don't want to have that conversation, but at some point, we have to figure out, okay, you know, unless, unless somebody rubs the lamp, we're not adding anything. In fact, we're not even at a level service budget. So, do we have a, have a list of what that might look like?
I think that that conversation needs to happen at the same, we haven't talked about what we can, what we think we can do to mitigate some of the expenses. So I think that we should have that conversation as well as taking a look at, you know, what might have to go. So I, I think we have to have both conversations. And that, I'm just trying to follow our agenda. The next item on the agenda is to talk about ways we can try to address this. It's the next item, it's, no, the, I'm sorry, the agenda that I articulated when we got here, what, how we were going to deal with this. Various trends, projected overview of the budget, shortfalls, and ways to address the shortfall in the public question.
Just one, one point I would like to add before I turn it back to Mr. Menon. The 3.7 positions that I talked about earlier tonight were by no means the total amount or the total number of positions that were talked about among the leadership team. We had a much larger list when we started, as you can imagine, and we really whittled that down to what we thought were absolutely essential for us to be able to move forward and to meet needs. So, that's a, that's a very watered-down list, if you will, of where we started. So, just, I want to just make a point of that.
I guess, just a couple of points I'd make before we move into the discussion of what we're going to do about this challenge that we've got. And, again, this is math, so bear with me. The city appropriation that we're expecting is 3.9. The increases in both salary and the new positions actually come out to 3.87? So we're not actually, yeah. So, we're actually living within the city's appropriation, but the revenue shortfall is with the difference.
Yes.
So I wanted to make sure that was understood, that it's non-city group instead of the problem. Okay? We're going to have a conversation about choice as one way to try to mitigate some of this. I don't know how you want to view that.
I'm, I'm happy to jump in, and I'll look to Mr. Parent to chime in as well. One of the areas that we have talked about is that we have a, a much smaller class coming into the ninth grade for next year. I believe 166, Mr. Parent?
Somewhere in that area, yes, so we're 20 under what our normal is.
For that particular class. So, in, in a conversation that Mr. Parent and I have had, we are thinking that we would like to open choice in the ninth grade, but we'd like to limit it to 15 slots because that will keep us equivalent to where we are right now at the high school in terms of numbers overall when we look at the board rates. So, that is something we have not been able to do at the high school level in a long time. So, being able to open 15 slots, I think, will be appealing. I think we'll probably be able to fill most of those slots, if not all of them, based on inquiries that we have had at central office so far. I know that there's a lot of anticipation from members of the community as to what we will be doing in choice. So, that's a, that is, is an area that will help with our revenue, for sure, by being able to fill some of those slots.
What is the, the choice tuition was $5,000?
$5,000 per student.
So that would be $75,000 of the shortfall that we recovered there.
Let me ask a question that won't be really difficult to figure out where I'm leading. Have we had inquiries at pre-K and K this year for choice? Do you know?
Amy, I would look to you. Have we had any?
Choice inquiries.
Choice inquiries for pre-K or K?
We have, we always do. It's really too early to tell. If you've been registering for kindergarten for the month of February. Technically, tomorrow is supposed to be the last day of registration. However, if somebody moves in, you know, or registers at some point between now and the start of the year, they obviously will register them. We're right around there. We were last year at this time. I think last year at this time, we were at 89 applications, and we ended up in the normal class of 116. As of today, we're at 80 kindergarten applications. I expect to be, to take a few more in during the week, but as was my projection, I do expect to bring in a low of 116 and a high of 130 next year. So, it's always very hard right now with the budget to tell. Preschool, we don't have any room. We have 25 people that are vying for about five open spots in our preschool program. So, if we had more rooms, more money, we could expand, but we don't have enough room. Our main purpose is to provide for students with special needs, and we're actually taking in less tuition-paying typical students next year because of the ratio we need to hold for students on IEPs and special needs.
You know, again, if somebody could clarify, if we're, essentially, you're saying we're essentially, you're projecting that we're going to have essentially the same number of kids?
So this year, we were down that. We're, we're at 116, 117, we're a new student a week in our kindergarten. That was down from the past year to about 130. We're averaging around 130, 135 from three years before that. Next year, it's really hard to say because those birth rates are iffy. There's not always a lot of correlation. So we projected a low of 116 and a high of 130. I suspect it will be a little, like, my guess is it will be in the 120s. As of today, we're at 80 applications, and although that sounds low, it's about right for this time of year. Not everybody rushes out to register despite our advertising. A lot of people, you know, move in or wait until closer to the start of the school year.
I mean, the reason that I'm asking, obviously, is that, you know, we're looking at a loss in revenue in both of those programs, trying to sort of figure out where the loss in revenue is coming from, A, and B, one way that we can help to try to address that is make, make a decision about choice at the school committee level, which we have to do annually.
And I would like to open up some choice seats at the kindergarten level. I just don't, I think it's too early to make a decision about that tonight, and I'm wondering if that's something that the school committee could revisit closer to the end of this school year.
I don't know what, I don't know what statutorily requirements are for making a declaration about choice. I honestly don't know, Kathy Manning would know.
I think it's June 1st, I can check.
June 1st?
I'm going to double check.
The problem, Mr. Menon, is that we had, I had originally requested eight sections of kindergarten, which would be one additional section if we were to go to the high projection. And due to the shortfall in the budget, we already cut that back to hold it at seven sections of kindergarten. So my hesitation is, is if we opened even a few choice seats, would that put a class size over the guidelines if we do go to the higher projection? And I don't have budgeted an extra teacher, an extra classroom right now. I, I just think it's a little early to tell. I would love to revisit it. I would love to open up some choice seats if we can. I'm just, I'd rather be a little conservative at the moment.
Is it, is it realistic, is it realistic to say that if we revisit this in our last meeting in May, we'll be able to make a decision if, if there's a June 1st deadline?
We will be able to make a better decision than I could right now. And I'm sorry, you know, there are just some summers where I registered 40 kids. Do I anticipate that happening this summer? No, I don't. But if I register 10 more additional kids in the summer and I need five up for choice, then that kind of puts us in a bind.
Okay.
So was hoping to have higher members come June 1st or May? Yes. Maybe we can look at it then.
Good, thank you, that's really helpful.
Okay, thank you.
We'll, we'll move that to then, and have the discussion then about kindergarten choice. I think that we can make a decision. We don't need to make it now, but we can make a decision about choice. We don't have to make all our decisions about choice in one meeting, right?
No, no. As information comes in.
I think, sort of apropos of what Dave asked, what is the thinking of the superintendent and leadership team about what else we can do to try to address this?
I, I think that certainly, choice was one of the areas that we wanted to address. We've done that, we, we've done that, at least at the, at the high school level. That's one of the recommendations we had. We continue to, you know, apply for grants and to do those kinds of things. I mean, the leadership team would have to go back and look at, at, you know, where else we can cut, and that's, that is what we would have to do. So, in terms of revenue, choice is a big thing. We can't, we obviously do not control the state and federal dollars and what comes to us. So it's a matter of looking at the current budget that we have, looking at what currently exists, and what we would choose to take away.
In light of what Amy had to say about, about already making those cuts, how much of that has already been done to get us to a whole of $500,000?
We've, we've certainly had, you know, the, the, the 3.7 increase, increases that we had in FTEs, that is, I mean, that's sort of the new in the budget. The, obviously, the increases that, that are due to salary increases that are already have been, are contractual, that's built in, that was built in. So, you know, we would have, the leadership team would have to take another look and see what we could, what we would have to change.
So, so the budget that you're presenting tonight doesn't reflect any losses of FTEs at this point in your?
It does not, no. But, but what I will say is that, obviously, as a public school system, we are heavily linked to our personnel, that's the largest percentage of our budget, and that is where the savings, the quick savings come up. So we would be looking at perhaps not adding in some of the new positions, or looking at what we would be trading off for those new positions. So, it really is a, a trade-off.
And Susan and I have talked about looking at the current budget we're in FY18 to see if, even though it's, you know, we've shortened the budget the last two years, I don't think there's a lot of savings to be had this year, but we continue to look at that to see if there's any areas there that we can recoup some money and hold for next year.
And, and not purchase some things that might be planned to be purchased for the spring. You know, there, there are a number of other things that we can do.
Two questions. The $5,000 in choice, that's, I'm assuming, lower than we spend on average for a student in the district?
Yeah, I agree on that. About $11,000 less.
So, I'm struggling with how that becomes a profit.
It, it's added revenue, it comes in as added revenue that we don't have currently. So that's the only way that it becomes.
Right, but there's still some cost associated with.
There is, but when you, when you're looking at adding those, assuming, you know, you're adding those students in across the district?
Yep.
You know, it, it may be negligible in terms of you're adding another student to a class.
I get how that works out.
Yeah, it's one of those, yeah, it's one of those things where if you have the class staffed, you know, and it's empty seats, you can fill them, you fill them, but, again, at what cost? What's the trade-off? And it was, not, not to go back and do a little history, but, you know, one of the reasons why New Report was so attractive with choice years ago is our location, because you've got people traveling from Salisbury who maybe don't want to go to Triton, so they drop their kid and go to work in New Report. And, you know, per capita, we, as Bruce mentioned, we were the highest in the, in the state, but, again, we've also found that we're at capacity. So now, you know, when you have these opportunities, it's, it has to be a really thoughtful process because it does. I mean, you are, unless you have, you know, a glaring, small class, it's really tough, you know? And, and even then, now our class is more full. Like, I know we've had some big classes at the high school of over 200 students per class, and, you know, it's unusual that we've got one rolling in that's smaller, so.
Two more quick questions. Also, we can't choose the students, right? So, is it, is it a first 15 to apply kind of thing?
It's a blind lottery.
A blind lottery? So everyone applies, and then you pick them out of the?
You know, it's, it's, I mean, we get who we get, and, and so, so you do have, you know, you do have some students who come in who certainly might have higher costs, but that also is mitigated in that if you get a student that has extraordinary costs associated with it, that money comes back to us. So, that is accounted for.
And one of the downsides to choice, as we've talked about before, is that it's been at $5,000 since it was implemented, hasn't changed.
Yes.
Doesn't grow the cost.
And statewide, there's been, there's been some efforts here and there to get that changed, but hasn't really gotten any traction. Can I ask a question about special ed a little? Because I remember, you know, a few years ago, we were, we kind of had a lot of, out of district placement, and as I look at the trends in these special ed costs, effectively, tuition since FY13 has gone up 66%. Transportation, 12%, and staffing, almost 26.95% for that period. So, tuition really sticks out as, you know, are we doing anything to try to, and I don't mean that, that, I know we are, but how effective have we been in bringing kids back from out-of-district placements and saving on some tuition?
We don't, you know, from my perspective, and Christina is here, and I'll let her respond to it too, I don't think that we have a disproportionate number of students who attend programs outside of the district at all.
Okay.
I think that, that one of the things that hampers every dis, every public school district across the Commonwealth is the fact that, that out-of-district placements, those private schools where students are sent usually because of extraordinary needs, they have a process in which they can increase their tuition every single year, and to my knowledge, at least in my five years here, that's never decreased, that any tuition increases that have been requested have always been granted.
And sometimes they're quite significant.
Yes.
Quite significant.
So, anything you want to add to that, Christina?
Sure. I, I agree that the students who are up is tend to be certainly our students with our highest needs. I will say that one area, and Lisa is here, and I don't want to sort of go off on a tangent, but one area that we really have been focusing on is our language-based programming, especially at the middle school level. I think that that's something, Emily Russen has, has been really instrumental in that as well, and Tim Mahan. A lot of us have been coming together to try to strengthen that, and that's reflected in the proposed increase of a .5 reading teacher, because I, I do think that that's directly an area that, you know, we've made a lot of improvements in, and I hope that we continue to go in that direction.
Were there some, and I'm, again, I'm just looking at the, the trends, were there some special programs that were implemented for FY16? Because it seems like FY16 was especially, I think, total costs went up by about 13% with staffing going up about $457,000. with staffing, uh, going up about four hundred fifty-seven thousand dollars. So I was just curious if there was some new programs brought into play, because the year before, overall costs were increased very low, less than one percent, and then the next year they're up thirteen percent. So I'm just curious if, was there some new programming implemented or new staffing?
Yeah, honestly, I would have to look back. I, off the top of my head, I, I do know, um, I believe that that year we did see, for example, an increase in the number of our postgraduate students in our, um, eighteen to twenty-two program at the high school. Many of those students, that program requires a very high level of staffing.
Okay.
So for the past two years, those numbers have been quite high. Next year, there's going to be a slight decrease. Um, so I, I, I do recall that, you know, we did put some resources into that. I would have to look back on that.
The, the other area that we added resources to was outcomes and staff.
Right, okay. I mean, I just, I just look at this because it's a pretty good chunk of the budget we were talking about, and I appreciate the effort to increase choice and bring in some revenue, whether it be seventy-five K via choice or twenty or twelve K a, a student with educatious. But, uh, I just, when I'm looking at the special ed things, I, I guess I just, and I'm not saying people aren't doing this, but to have some, you know, forward-looking anticipatory, you know, where is this, you know, taking us? And, uh, because those costs, you know, th, those costs are going to go up. And, and again, uh, it, it appears that we're recognizing that, and programmatically, we're doing things to address certain areas that if we don't address them now, we're going to pay for it later. And, uh, so that's what, I guess that's what I'm trying to, trying to get a handle on, because I, I agree with tuition, and I'm very familiar with Mass Association of Prove Private Schools who advocate for those increases every year, uh, and use of collaboratives. So I, I, again, that just stands out to me, especially the tuition increase over the five-year period.
One other area that I, I do want to comment on is that the week before vacation, Angela and my parent and myself met with another agency that recruits students from China to come to the United States for both their junior and senior year. And they are very interested in having some students come to Newburyport High School. And, um, that comes with it them paying the student tuition. Um, earlier, um, this year, we put out a call to the community when we had some interest from students from educatious who were looking to come here on a semester basis, uh, for host homes. And we had more people come forward. They were blown, educatious was blown away by the number of families that were willing to, um, have, have these students and to host these students. So we're looking to develop another relationship with another agency in which we could, um, have students coming from China where they would be paying for tuition from the board, and that would be another source of revenue to us as well. So, but that's in the early stages, and we'll see where that goes.
When I take a look at the expense by cost center, the percent change is significantly higher at Mullen than at the other cost centers, at about ten percent. And yet, the only, for about a total of three hundred and three thousand dollars, uh, the staffing that you're asking for in that area is sixty thousand dollars. Nancy, is there an idea as to where that difference as to why Mullen's a percent increase would be so high?
Um, one of the reasons is, is special education. Um, we added an ABA this year. So while you're looking at like eight point six percent for FY eighteen, that really has changed. It hasn't, that's what was budgeted. And we are adding two IAs, additional IAs that are moving up from Brezner Hand School, while it's not new staff, it's new staff to the Mullen, which increases their costs as well.
Okay.
That's the biggest impact. That, and we added a, an additional fellow in each school. So while the Mullen school looks like they're adding a lot of staff, it's really not.
No, I was just trying to get an idea as to what was included in that ten percent. Thank you. Bruce, are you looking to vote on choice tonight?
No.
Okay.
Yeah.
I have one question. Uh, if the kids come in and not have perfect choice, do they get to stay?
Yes.
All high school?
Yes.
So that will affect the tenth grade class size? And what if five families move in for freshman year, and they think you're going to get seventy-five thousand, now you're going to lose even more, right?
They could leave a buffer.
You do have to sort of plan a buffer, I guess.
Nancy, are we getting, um, all that we are entitled to in terms of circuit breaker?
Yes. In fact, right now, we're working on to see if we qualify for extraordinary relief again this year. Not sure that we will, but Dawn does all the factoring, even though it's a, it's a lot of work, it's worth the effort to find out if we qualify.
And, I mean, the other piece that, you know, it's always a long shot as the legislature begins winding through your budget. Our initial cherry sheet showed that there's a seven point one percent increase in our assessment to the charter school, comes right off the top, and that last year, as you put your whole net aid from the state together, we were at a negative six point two percent. And, you know, we, we have accepted that as, you know, I think, as a city, we've come together and said, we know that we're just not going to get the kinds of resources and funding that we need from the state to fund our school districts. So we've really taken upon ourselves as a community to say, with the help of the city council, that we are going to, you know, move above that. So this year, it's a seven point one percent increase in the assessment of the charter school, but we, um, but it, and it ended up with a net, um, state aid to this, to our district for everything that we get at a point zero one percent increase. And the other piece that I think is important to understand, that when, um, the Mass Municipal Association Leadership Board made up, the people from the Mass School Committee are there, as well as, um, leaders from across the state, and every single school district is struggling this year, um, that I've talked to, every single school district. Uh, tomorrow, we have the opportunity to meet with the Senate President, um, and to, a major topic of conversation is going to be, uh, school funding, uh, as it always is as we go forward. So there's the possibility that as the budget winds through the legislature, House Ways and Means, et cetera, that we could see, um, some more money put into, uh, education. Because if you look at the increase that was put in House One budget, the problem is, is that a big chunk of that is going to students who came from Puerto Rico to cover those school districts. So there isn't, you know, a tremendous amount of, you know, new funding in that, in that area. So, you know, that's, you know, one area that I will continue to advocate for and will continue to report back as, you know, where the budget is through that process. But I also encourage everyone in our community to reach out to Senator Ives and to Representative Calcorce, and to, again, report, you know, where we are in terms of, of the school budget. But, um, you know, that's, uh, there is a, a glimmer of hope that there could be at least a few thousand dollars there. Um, the other pieces that, in terms of as we move into talking about the shortfall, is that we did have, um, I'm reluctant to even say it, eight hundred thousand dollars that was a balance left over from the Brezner Hand School project, um, that we potentially could tap some of that. But again, one-time revenues, i- it's difficult to just reach in and take it because it's not going to be there anymore as we go forward. And we've been kind of holding on to that for things that, you know, like the elevator at, not Mullen, the parking lot, for some of the capital needs that have to happen there, repairing the roof. Um, so, but there is some of that funding there that, you know, we could have conversations with the city council about potentially tapping into a little bit of that. I certainly, um, thank the leadership team for the work that they have done in understanding, you know, that the three point nine percent was what we could, you know, um, give. But with the loss of revenue on the school side, this is a problem. We also have, uh, close to seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars sitting in an account from the sale of the Kelly School. So it's not like we are totally broke, uh, you know, in terms of looking outside into some of those, you know, other, um, pots of money. Again, I caution because once you take it, it's done, it's gone. And what do we do next year? So, you know, but there's a chance that we could take some of that to help be sure that, you know, like these, some of these priorities are absolutely funded. And again, having conversations with the, um, city council about that and being able to maybe move a little bit of those funds in to help with some of the shortfall this year. I mean, it would have been okay if we didn't see the loss of revenue on the school side, because that's what's really hurting this budget this year.
Um, I, I have been asking this question for eighteen years, and I will ask it again. Choice isn't the only thing that, the amount of money that the state funds for choice isn't the only thing that hasn't changed since nineteen ninety-three. The chapter seventy formula hasn't changed since nineteen ninety-three. It determines what kind of funding it needs. And periodically, over those eighteen years, there have been studies done by the legislature, initiatives. Um, I just, it's been kind of quiet on that front lately, and I wondered if you had any more information than I've got.
Well, what I can tell you is that I happened to, um, attend a Rotary meeting today in which Jim Calcorce was the speaker. And one of the things that he talked about was that chapter seventy is very much a focus, uh, at the, at the legislative level this year. So, um, I did not have an opportunity to speak with him after the meeting, but I intend to give him a call and to talk with him specifically about, um, what he referenced at the, at the meeting, at the Rotary meeting, so.
And there is tremendous push on the Revenue Task Force that, um, not Revenue Task Force, the, um, Ed Reform Task Force that did the listening tours, and many of us in this room went and testified in, in Danvers. And so there's been, um, some push in terms of looking at some of those recommendations and funding more of them. They've done a little bit of adjustment in terms of benefits for teachers, and obviously, the cost of health insurance is, again, uh, another concern to, you know, our budget, even though that's not included in the school budget, it's still, uh, very much a real item. At this moment, we're looking at a six point five percent increase, um, which is, again, uh, hard. It's a hit on the city side. And the other piece is, um, the impact of the increases in trash. Um, because of the, um, Chinese sword and what's happening with China not taking, um, ninety-seven percent of the recycled materials that they did in the past, all of, uh, trash haulers who've been recycling, they're sitting in containers all across the country, and nobody knows what to do with this stuff. So our, uh, trash contract increased thirty-six percent. That is astronomical. And so we've been negotiating to get that down. Uh, and our, you know, successfully have got, have decreased it from that initial number. But these are real costs to, you know, services that we provide, uh, across the city that all have to be taken into consideration, these increases with, with the budget too.
Any more questions at this point? Again, I, this is our first conversation about the budget. Um, I think, I certainly feel like I've got a lot of things to think about. Do we have questions for the principals and others who have come here? Or do they want to talk with us at this time before we open up to the community?
I have one question I'd like to ask to Mike. Mike, the twenty, twenty seats lower, uh, fewer kids in freshman year, um, historically, from what I understand, if experienced freshman year is always a stressor for kids. They have a lot of, the transition's tough. So in a time when we're talking about safe and supportive schools and social, emotional learning, what do you guys think the impact would be of having just a small freshman class? Like, to me, that sounds kind of nice.
It does sound kind of nice, but, you know, our current freshman class is two sixteen. Now that's, we have a much bigger freshman class than normal.
Yep.
I mean, yeah, I could take a hundred and sixteen freshman year and, and roll with it, but that's not, that's not the position that we're in right now. I, I think that we do well with our freshmen. I would not, I would not say that our freshman classes are crowded or too large. So I am very comfortable with fifteen. Um, once we have the process where kids choose classes, and we have the students making choices at the knot, whether they're going to Newburyport High School or elsewhere, and students from the other seven schools making termination, we, we could possibly have more than fifteen be a comfortable number. Fifteen to be as comfortable. I don't think it stresses anything at the high school in any department.
Okay. Do you have an idea what our average class size in freshman year is? I mean, you have twenty, two sixteen, so it's a lot bigger, but.
Yeah, you know, I would, I would say, you know, for the most part, if you had to average it out, hmm, twenty, twenty-two on the average.
And that's with, that's this year with two sixteen?
It depends, again, on, you know, we have some classes that have twenty-eight, we have some classes that have eighteen.
I know.
So, you know, the one area I'm always wary about is science, because I can only focus many core students in a biology section by Osho regulation. So that's the one I'm, I'm most hesitant about. Um, I, I, again, I, I see fifteen as a very comfortable number.
Okay.
I don't see that adding to or negating any of the common, um, integrations problems that students have in the high school.
The other point is that there's not really a direct correlation between the enrollment and the grade level directly to class size, because we determine sections based on course requests. So there's no teachers that just specifically teach to a grade level. So if you have a small ninth grade class next year, that doesn't mean they all have small class sizes. Right? So one teacher might teach another section of tenth grade English more than they would have in a previous year to balance it out from grade to grade.
Okay, great. Thank you.
I wanted to give anybody else an opportunity to ask questions of the principals who are good enough to be here tonight. We haven't opened a public comment yet. Okay. All right. Again, this is our first look at the budget. I think it's going to be a topic of conversation going forward during our meetings. Um, we, we've got a lot to think about. Um, if there are questions from the public, I would be happy to, to entertain them now. If you would just stand up and, and give your name, it will be a question and answer approach that we'd like to take here. Is there anybody who has a question?
My name is Mary Zink, and I am a principal at the, the.
Come up to them.
School. I'm in seventh grade. And, um, I have one that has completely stopped talking. My children have been in classrooms with twenty to twenty-four kids, and I've asked numerous times, my children, one on one aides, rather than one on two aides, and there's one aide in that classroom, the teacher.
Mary, if you have a, if, Mary, if you have a question to ask about.
Well, it's about the budget, the aides.
Let me finish. If you have a question to ask about the budget, that is what this is about.
That's what I'm talking about.
There is a, there will be a question, there will be a, a public comment period at the beginning of the next meeting, which is going to happen in five minutes.
I feel that the budget is not giving out aides to the classes and teachers. Have you considered that in any more way?
Okay, okay. Thank you. Thank you, yes. Okay.
And classroom size, it's very large, and teachers have a lot of students with special needs that are put in the classroom. So that's another thing I've.
Okay. The, the question about aides, I would ask Angela or the superintendent, if they had a response to that?
Off the top of my head, we have seventy-plus aides across the district. Um, and we have not had a request. Um, we had a request this year from Mullen for additional aides, which we were able to, um, and that was due to new students moving in. But we have not had teacher assistant requests from the principal level for next year. So they, they have been.
Principal that does that?
So the principals request that. Um, we have, we also have students as they transition from building to building. We have, we also have students as they transition from building to building. If a student is, has needs that require a one-to-one, the position, not necessarily the actual person, but the position moves with the student to the next building.
Sometimes.
No, that actually is what's been planned for this coming budget. That's what we've done.
Next year?
For next year, that's correct.
Okay. And so do you think in your budget, are you preparing for each of these children to actually be covered? It's covered in the IEPs?
For the new students?
All the children?
For all of the students right now, what we have covered in the budget covers the hours that are on the IEPs, yes.
So that's the coming budget, the new budget?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you. Are there other questions? Okay, I think we've got to shut the forum down for now. I want to thank Nancy Lysick in particular, who is working very hard at this. I also want to thank the principals. We are at the beginning of a conversation that we always seem to have in the spring. Flowers come up and we have painful conversations, but we will continue to have a dialogue. I appreciate the mayor also sharing some possible options for us. We will work on this together. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Does this mean, does this mean...
Motion to close the school budget forum. All those in favor?
Aye.
And motion to call to order our business meeting for Tuesday, February twenty-seventh, twenty eighteen. Mrs. Kennedy, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Kennedy?
Here.
Mr. Cole?
Here.
Mr. Menon?
Here.
Mayor Holodeon?
Present.
Mr. Hawke?
Here.
Mr. Riddick's absent, Mr. Callahan?
Here.
We open up our period of public comment now. Again, sort of the baseline that we expect is that, come up to the microphone, give us your name, make your comment, try to keep it within two minutes. If it's, if there is a question that we can answer, we may suspend the rules and try to answer that question. If not, we will take notes and try to get a response to the question for our next meeting. Is there anybody who has a public comment they would like to make?
I do.
Mary.
My name is Mary Zeng and I have two girls, special needs, and one of them in particular has been bullied four times. It's been documented. Nothing has been addressed except for, it's been addressed and one boy got moved, that was it. So I thought there was a stronger bullying policy in place within the school. Could you explain that to me?
A stronger bullying policy? The school has, the district has bullying policies.
So is four times acceptable?
Are you saying, are you asking, Mary, are you asking whether there's a stronger policy or whether the policy we have is being enforced?
Well, I'm concerned if it's been four times, is that acceptable? I read your...
No, one time is not accepted.
Well, I read, that's what I, on your front page of...
But again, I'm trying to clarify your question.
My clarification is, so what should I have expected the school to do instead of doing nothing?
I'm not willing to accept that the school did nothing at this point based on what you're telling me.
Okay.
I have no information to respond to your question. If you have a question about the bullying policy, I would either defer to Nick or I would defer to the superintendent. If it's a question about the bullying policy...
She won't talk to me, so I don't know. How about the, my daughter can't talk?
I don't think it's appropriate to be discussing individual...
Do you think it's appropriate for a child to be stuck in a closet for five weeks?
I do not think it is appropriate to use public comment to talk about individual children in the district.
The specialized program is broken.
Thank you, Mary. Thank you, Mary.
It needs help.
We have a consent agenda, do we have warrants?
Yes, we have some warrants. I move that the following name bills and payrolls of the Newburyport Public Schools amounting in the aggregate of twenty-five thousand nine hundred ninety dollars and sixty-seven cents be approved for the city auditor to make payment and deduct the funds from the school's account. There are no conflicts.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? One absent?
I move that the following name bills of the Newburyport Public Schools amounting in the aggregate thirty-seven thousand nine hundred forty-eight dollars and eighty-six cents be approved and forwarded to the city auditor for payment. There are no conflicts.
Second.
I'm sorry, any comments, any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? One absent?
And the last warrant, I move that the following name bills of the Newburyport Public Schools amounting in the aggregate of four hundred two thousand three hundred fifty-seven dollars and twenty-one cents be approved and forwarded to the city auditor for payment. There are no conflicts.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? We have, is that Paul's statement?
That'll do it, thank you.
We have two sets of minutes, but I have a question about whether we actually need to approve the second set of minutes of the interviews. I don't know why we need to approve those minutes. Is it a formal meeting of the school committee?
Yes.
So then it gets to approve the minutes. For the minutes of February fifth, twenty eighteen, do I have a motion to approve?
To move.
Any comments, any changes? I actually, I actually had one, if I can figure out my notes. I think it was right at the very beginning, it's a minor one. I don't believe I was the one who called for a moment of silence, I think it actually was Steve.
Yeah.
It was Mr. Cole, so that's the only change I have.
Did you recognize him?
I recognized him.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Seven minutes, it should say that Steve said those.
That's fine. Yeah, it did say that he said it, but...
Yeah, you recognize him, that was written.
Good, all right. Any other changes? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Oh, do we have a second? We have to do it all? We had, we had a motion, do we have a second?
You moved.
I moved second. Yes, we have a second.
Third.
Boy, am I rusty. We've got minutes from the meeting of the thirteenth of February. Can I move that? All right, I can move the minutes, I'll move the minutes, be approved?
Second.
Any discussion? Other than making the comment that I would like to count Kathy Manning for taking those minutes, I really appreciate that. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Nick, do you have the high school report?
I have the high school report. I'm filling in as a high school student, so use your imagination, people. We're postponing Spirit Week because of the opportunity to be involved with the March fourteenth, March fourteenth or twenty-fourth?
Fourteenth.
March fourteenth, civic action on part of the students. Poetry Soup, Wednesday, February twenty-eighth at seven P.M. Exciting news, the Newburyport High School presents Gypsy at seven P.M., March second, third, eighth, ninth, and tenth. So there are five performances of Gypsy. I always do a great job with the musicals. Credit for Life Fair for juniors is happening and signups are happening now. Boys Basketball versus Lynn tonight at seven, home game. The Masco Girls Hockey, which includes eight players from Newburyport High School, won their game today in the playoffs, two to nothing against Avon. Congratulations to them, so they move on in the playoffs. Girls Basketball defeated Tewksbury fifty-nine, forty-seven to advance to the quarterfinals at Penn Tucket. And I know you've all been waiting for this one. Ultimate Frisbee is a go. First game is March twentieth against Beverly.
We're going to win that game, this is the voice. Mike is left, so he can't tell us. Great.
It says against Beverly, yeah.
It's like the fields are in shape to play outside on March story.
Well, I've...
If they're on the turf.
My daughter plays at Ultimate Frisbee and I've never known field condition to be a factor.
I'm just saying, last year they didn't open up the fields after it had been burnt because it was so wet.
Yeah, we'll find out. The next item on our agenda is the update on superintendent search, which I'm happy to give. We have site visits planned for all day tomorrow and into the evening, both sites. I haven't hand counted, but I think we're seeing upwards of about thirty different people between the two candidates tomorrow that we'll be talking to. We are currently calling references. We have been reviewing feedback that we got from the first round of community visits. I expect that after we meet, after we do the site visits, we will probably hold until our meeting of the fifth to decide on the next steps. We have a range of options for next steps. They would include certainly inviting both candidates back for a second set of meetings with members of the community that they haven't had a chance to talk to. We could ask them to come back also for another interview. That is the school committee's decision to make and I don't anticipate calling a special meeting of the school committee between now and next Monday to have that conversation. Does anybody have any questions? There are, I think there are at least five people going down for each visit. Principals, a teacher, school committee members. I don't know if handle the rest of the folks, but we will report back. We'll be doing a, I assume, written set of feedback and report back to the school committee. Any thoughts, anything you want to add, anything you want us to make sure we cover tomorrow?
I'm just wondering if we want to think about, if we want more interviews, is that going to be regardless of what we find tomorrow? Or do we think we might find something tomorrow that's going to either blow us out of the water and say we don't need more interviews or negate the idea of even wanting to interview guys? I just don't want to wait till next week to talk about setting up interviews a week later and then we're into the problem, which you guys brought up a couple of weeks ago, which is time.
Yeah, I don't have a good answer for that, David. My suggestion is that we can ask each of the candidates, who I believe we're going to be seeing tomorrow, if they, when they are available in the week, next week, to come back for a second interview.
And you can always cancel it.
Yeah, we can always cancel it.
That's a good idea.
I guess that was my point, like we should set something up.
Set something up.
Yeah, that's not a problem.
Especially if we're trying to organize people here.
Mm-hmm.
Good point.
Well, I'm fine with that. I would, I would hope it would be next week, obviously. I just want to give the school, I just want to give everybody a chance to take a look at the feedback. The school committee has just gotten the feedback today, I think, or yesterday, you got the feedback from the community. So I think it's really useful, feedback, it's worth taking a look at.
Could we, I don't know, suggest blocking the dates of Wednesday and Thursday for purposes of second interviews next week? Or Tuesday and Wednesday, I don't know, I'm just picking two days out of the hat. If we can choose two days, then it's easier to cancel than to schedule. People are usually very thankful to have the time they weren't expecting back on their agenda.
If we want to do two interviews, we do them the same day like last time?
We could do it in one day.
I'm suggesting two, two days right now to block, not necessarily ten on each day, but so that we can, if they can't do one, hopefully they can do the other type of thing.
Yeah. Yeah, we can. You want to say Wednesday and Thursday?
Can't do Thursday.
Tuesday, Wednesday.
Tuesday, Wednesday?
And see if we can't really try and nail down one for both.
So these like placeholder dates, so to speak?
Those are the dates that we'll share with the candidates.
Right. And so will there be a time when we can, as a school committee, review, you know, what was basically provided as feedback on February thirteenth as well as what we can compile tomorrow?
I would assume, this is what I, this is what logically I would assume, we would have that conversation on the fifth. And at that point, we would make the decision whether we bring them back, one, both, none, that we would, we would be gathering all the information that we've got from the site visit, from the previous visit here, and figuring out what more we need.
And that's an agenda item in the public meeting?
Yes. Does that, I mean, does that address your question?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, because I think that's really vital, because it also allows us to, again, bring forward our observations and, you know, combine those with what others have, you know, provided us through narrative feedback. And, 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 again, I mean, I, again, from having gone through this before, I see that finalist, final, if you will, is kind of being really a crucial step for us to decide on. And I think that type of thing merits a motion and a vote that we're going to proceed that way. So.
I agree. So the plan, so again, we will gather all the material that we can, make sure that the school committee has access to it. And we will have our discussion on the fifth. I will ask both candidates to set aside those days or one of those days. We'll pick this up. We can start planning, obviously, tomorrow's Wednesday, Thursday. We can start planning the day in the district on Thursday, and I'll be available to do that. I'll come down to the office and I'll work with Kathy on it. Okay? That's where we stand. Great. I return the next part of the meeting over to Nick.
Okay. Hi. We have section E of our policy manual, which is the last section of all, but we, I sent a redlined version out to everybody today. Most of the changes in there were typos and corrections. Thank you, Brian, and David and Bruce for getting back to me with those. There were a couple of other changes that we made that are in content and that they were as a result of comments from David and Bruce. So let me just get to that and I will take you through them. And then there were a couple of discussion questions that came up, and I think whether we have them right now or as part of a policy subcommittee meeting to try and put a little more teeth around them are very valid questions and I don't necessarily think that they're going to impact our passing the policies tonight, but you may choose differently. Okay. Spoons. And section, second reading, here we go. So the first change is in policy, E B C, emergency plans, which would be page six of your, of your deck that I sent out today, we added it, yes?
Can I just be, because that's after this, I wanted to just ask a question
Sure.
On one before that.
Yep.
Because I figured as we scroll through this document, under first aid,
Yes.
Which is file E B B. It states that at each school, procedures will be developed for the proper handling of an injury or sudden illness. Schools have these policies, correct?
Yes.
So that's, why, why does that say will be?
I, I think it's a way of stating that that is a requirement that we have them in place. I'm happy to change that will to.
I think you should just do it, just say we'll have in place, or we'll always have in place, or we'll continue to have in place since we have them. How about that?
Are, are developed and followed?
Yeah.
I just, it, it sounds like we aren't doing anything here.
Yep.
I know that we have really extensive policies.
That was point.
It's a one, two, the third paragraph down in first aid, section E, support services, file EBV.
Yeah, I have, I have, I have the file. Which paragraph is it?
One, two, three.
Pretty done, okay.
At each school, procedures will be developed.
Will be maintained at each school. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Okay. Moving down to emergency plans. So the kinds of things that are in the emergency plans, I'm recommending at the request of Mr. Hawkeizer, and I think it's a good one, is that we talk about the training that staff needs to have and needs to be regularly updated. We need to make sure that they're certified in that. So I added point eight on the list of different points that are to be included. And that is initial and yearly refresher training for all staff covering emergency management protocols, parentheses, Alice. Okay. That covers all of the sub-points that you covered, David, in your, it's great, in your comment. Okay?
And it's also, let me just add to that, it's also, it's all of our emergency protocols. It's, you know, fire drills, it's lockdowns, it's all of that that we go over on an yearly basis.
Okay, let me go down to find the next. Student transportation services, Mr. Menon raised a question. And I added some verbiage to give us flexibility. It doesn't mean that we're doing something now or that, but we have the flexibility in the future. And it's the first paragraph. It states the major purpose of the school's transportation services is to aid students in getting to and from school in an efficient, safe, and economical manner. We added three words that I think makes sense for us to just keep them there as a stopgap, as a, as a use if we need it, but it's there to, to give us a flexibility, and that is if budgetarily feasible. So if the budget puts pressure on us such that we need to change the economically feasible somewhat, we have the flexibility and people can't come back and say, you're hanging yourself with this policy. And the rest of it, the rest of the changes, I believe, were all typo corrections. That is correct. So with that, and with these changes, I would ask the approval of section E, Mayor.
I'm sorry, I just didn't get a chance to get these, a couple little things. I just, in policy, section E, support services, file EEAA, we talk about walkers and riders, yet you never mention anything about walking. It's all about buses. I mean, aren't we encouraging safe routes to school? Aren't we encouraging kids to walk more, to bike more? I just think that if this is a policy on walking and riding, we should say walking, biking, and riding, or somehow could we just add, you know, and that especially since we're in the middle of just starting implementation of this $1.3 million grant program from the feds, Safe Routes to School?
Yep.
It just seems to make sense that we put something in here about that.
I, I agree completely. That's a very good catch. E. Here we go. So we talk about the transportation that is provided, substance of these guidelines may be this. So it's probably a, a new paragraph at the end of this?
Sure.
Okay.
As a school district, we encourage students to use alternative transportation, walking, biking, to school, and support safe routes, the development of safe routes to school, something as simple as that, just to put something in there for that piece?
Just along the lines of safety and bus transportation, one of the things that we're going to be implementing for next year is that we are going to be having a separate color bus pass for each bus. And so it's going to be easy for drivers and for substitute drivers to identify that kids are on the right buses. So this was a suggestion that.
Pick a card, any card.
That a parent brought forward to Christina Davis. And I have been, I asked Keith Sullivan whether or not they would be able to do it, because they print our bus passes for us every year. That's our photographer. And he dropped these off today.
Wonderful.
So that's one of the things that we're going to be able to do. So I think that's going to add a level of safety and security for our students who do rent buses for next year.
Maybe it's because my kids are older, but I got laughed at, I think it was in December, sometime around Thanksgiving, when I asked the kids where their bus passes were. And they're like, Daddy, nobody looks at the bus passes.
At the beginning of the year, they certainly don't, particularly with new kids, believe me.
I'm saying maybe my kids are a little older, a little more fluid on and off the bus, but.
What is it, what, it's safe, what to school, safe?
Safe routes to.
Safe routes to school.
Would that safe routes include properly cleared pathways?
Oh, you should come and see this. It's a hun, look at it online, Brian. It's a hundred and twenty-two page report that talks about new sidewalks, bump outs, they, what do they call them? It's a strange name for an area that they bump out where kids wait, you know?
To cross or?
To cross, and they're talking about a beacon on the top of Johnson and High Street that will be installed. New sidewalks on Johnson Street. It's wonderful that, you know, we were able to get part, to become part of this program and we were selected for this project.
I'm thinking in particular, the pathways around this building, actually, because a lot of kids cut, there's a right of way between North Atkinson and what used to be the front of the Brezina.
That would be separate. They've really focused on the middle school.
No, but should we put that in this part of the document for, because you're walking? Do we have to get that specific?
I don't know that we want to get that specific.
Okay.
But that would, would be a safe route to school, because that is one that the kids use, and so we have to take a look at that, too.
Okay.
So the, the verbiage that I've added into this, walkers and riders policy now is the last paragraph. As a school district, we encourage students to use alternative transportation, parentheses, walking and biking, and support safe routes, the Safe Routes to School initiative.
Wonderful.
Okay. Great. Any other comments?
I have, I have just two more.
That's good. Thank you, Mayor.
EEAEA, support services, talks about bus driver examination and training. Shouldn't it say that bus drivers are cored in that policy?
We talked about that in the policy meeting, and I don't remember what the conclusion was.
I mean, I know that's all there is responsible, but they still, it should be in our policy that every bus driver is, is cored.
It's part, I think it's part of our bid when we go out to bid for transportation.
Well, it still should be.
Well, we can put it in the policy, yeah.
It doesn't hurt, yeah, it doesn't hurt to put it in.
And fingerprinted, too, right? Throw a loan with kids?
Each driver will file with his school officials a medical certificate and proof of freedom from tuberculosis. I mean, that.
What? What year is it?
They can't have tuberculosis.
They can't have tuberculosis.
Biotic plague, there's a whole bunch of things.
Bus drivers are fingerprinted, though, right? Back to Brian's point, bus drivers.
Some of these, some of these things reflect rather obtuse and outdated state laws.
Just put in there, just like, the point six that they'll, all bus drivers are required to be cored, checked, and any other.
And fingerprinted or?
Are they fingerprinted?
I'm not positive if they're fingerprinted.
I don't either.
You know, that's, that's something that we do for anybody entering our buildings, but I'm, but I'm not positive about that.
And going on field trips with our kids.
I don't think.
Well, they're not, because they're just driving, they're not never alone.
No, parents.
But they are alone. They're alone, the whole bus driver. I, I just think it would be awkward if we're telling a parent they can't go on a field trip without a fingerprint, but the bus driver can drive them around without a fingerprint.
I will check on that, but I don't know if the law requires that, but let me check on that and I'll let people know.
I'm just saying the law doesn't require parents getting a fingerprint.
That I believe.
It may be, it may be.
So the law doesn't require parents getting fingerprinted.
I'm saying I don't know the answer to that, so let me check on it.
I thought that was cleared up a couple of years ago when we added that as a new report. We went above and beyond the state policy to add.
We do.
So that's what I'm saying, the state does not require parents getting fingerprinted, but we do it.
We do it, yeah.
So I would imagine that we would at least want the bus drivers to be fingerprinted.
That'd be part of the bid, what you were saying.
Yes.
Yeah.
And finally, motor vehicle idling on school grounds, section E, support services, filed EEA. What I don't understand is at the end of the second paragraph, where it says, the school district shall erect and maintain in a conspicuous location on school grounds, no idling signage as described below. As, and then it, as such sign shall contain appropriate size so as to be visible from a distance of fifty feet. And then it says in caps, free and reduced price food services.
I do not know where that got it.
What? Why is that there?
It's to check to make sure you're seeing what's in the reading.
Oh, we have an opportunity to make a policy about it now.
About idling and free school?
If you turn off your motor, you're eligible for an extra burrito.
For free, free, reduced food services. I just, I looked at that, I was like, what?
Thank you. That clearly was, I was cutting and pasting from somewhere else and that one came over.
I, I just, that's it.
Good catch.
So happens when you work on the policies of Metzies, you know?
Okay.
I, I, what I had suggested in my comments to you were that vandalism policy gives us an opportunity to have a conversation about restorative justice and ways to do that. I'm comfortable with approving these proposals and coming to a policy meeting to have that conversation, to bring it back out to the school committee.
Yeah, we do have, we do have the restorative justice piece of it as part of our discipline. So when you think of disciplinary action as a result of vandalism, yes, we already, that, that is included as one of the, one of the options that are available to principals. If you want to make it more specific for vandalism, and this is really sort of maintenance, in the case of vandalism, we're, we're saying, hey, we can go and ask parents to pay up if their damage is done. But it doesn't necessarily go into the student discipline piece of it. Student discipline touches so many different areas, but.
We don't have to have that conversation now, but I'd like to have that conversation. Because I, you know, knowing that, I mean, the point that I think I made to you is that a very high incident, a lot of the vandalism that we see is also related to some of the cultural stuff, some of the hate crime stuff. And it's, it's really an opportunity to look at restorative justice options in it. But again, I would prefer to have that conversation in policy.
That's, I'm happy to do that. I think that's a great idea. The other, the other item that was up for discussion was, in the safety program, we have a line that says, all staff members recognize the preventing act of accidents is a daily operational responsibility. And Mr. Hawkeizer's question was, you know, how do we ensure that? How do we make sure, and is there any teeth that we need to put into that policy to truly address it with, with our staff? And I would open that question up to the superintendent. Is that something that's already covered in?
It's, it's an expectation. I mean, I certainly think it, it's a current expectation. You certainly can put it, put it as an expectation into the policy, but, you know, I mean, I think that's a professional responsibility.
That's fine.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you. I have nothing more than, other than to.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those, one absent.
Thank you, school committee. You have now completed your approval of policy manual. And we already have a whole list of updates and changes we need to make.
And thank you to the policy committee. It was a tremendous amount of work. Thank you. And Susan.
Work that took several years.
A year. Took us a year, a little over a year.
It's hard work.
We talked about it for a couple of years.
For a couple of years before that.
It just took us a while to get started.
Like to, at this point, move on to the superintendent's report?
Two things. One, just to let you know that Andrew Wolfe, our high school principal-elect, will be coming to the meeting on Monday. So you will have an opportunity to speak with Andrew on Monday. And then I just wanted to update you on where we are as a school district in terms of our students and the March fourteenth events that are planned across the country to honor those students and staff members from Parkland who lost their lives. And principals are meeting with students and are getting feedback from students. We are meeting as a leadership team on Thursday this week. And I will have more specifics for you, but we certainly want to honor student voice in, in this process. And I will have more for you on Monday. And we'll be able to give you some more specifics, but I just wanted to bring it to your attention that we are having the conversations and we'll be making some plans for the fourteen.
Thank you for that, thank you for that update. I'm really glad those leadership teams meeting with the students, I would have expected no less of them. I think that's great that they're doing it. It's nice to hear that. Great, Assistant Superintendent's report?
Yeah, I just wanted to give you a brief update on how the work within our professional learning communities are going. Where we have our full professional development day coming up on March sixteenth. And we have many of our PLCs, or the professional learning communities, going out to do site visits for the day in other districts and at other, in other organizations. It doesn't necessarily mean that they're visiting schools. Some are visiting or working collaboratively with education teams at museums and places like that as part of their professional development experience, so that they can explore what some of the other schools are doing related to the work that they've been focusing on this year in their professional learning community. They're very excited about that. They're each filling, each, PLC is filling out a proposal form that they discuss with their principal, making their own arrangements for the connections in the sites that they'd like to go. Some are working in district the same way. But it's been really interesting. We've had more proposals this year coming out of the work of the PLCs than we've seen, than we saw last year. Of course, this is their second year in the work. And some really exciting, innovative thinking that's coming forward. And, you know, at the high school level, people are starting to think about more cross-disciplinary work, proposing some coursework that doesn't fit into the typical framework that we have at the high school and talking about how we might think about things differently, how we might think about credits differently. For example, being able to offer some courses that does have multidisciplinary content in it and be available to students to take for credit in multiple content areas. So it allows students to follow more of a path of their passion as we start to think this way. So there's some really good work happening. There, I had a really great meeting with a teacher from the middle school today around some thinking they're doing there, around the whole design model of things and where they'd like to see that go. Some of our teachers are working in groups that have stemmed from the original PLC. So within the PLC, they've come up with new ideas, and there's been a subgroup that has developed off of that. And they're working on ways to implement their ideas. So I, I think it's been a really good year around the PLC work. I think that we've heard the voice of many. I don't, I think we're, you know, going to revisit and get some feedback from the PLCs as we get towards the end of the year to find out how actionable. PLCs as we get towards the end of the year to find out how actionable their work has been, because that's really one of our goals through the work that they're doing in the small professional learning communities, is to actually make our strategic plan actionable, and to, for them to be thinking about the best ways to do that as far as, you know, rethinking teaching and learning. So I just wanted to give you a little bit of an update about that. Unfortunately, I had a little sheet on my desk that I walked away with that had some of the really specific things, and I can share those with you through an email, but-
Or Monday.
Yeah, or on Monday, that's true. So, but really great work happening with the teachers in their professional learning community.
Great, move on to subcommittee reports. I can briefly talk about joint ed, David.
Why not?
Probably the most important thing about joint ed. On, sir?
Because they have the, you want to say, we're worried about that.
Well, what I was going to report out is that they have a tour of high school on March 5th.
Oh, sure.
So, yes, they're going to be touring the history, and they're going to take a look at the proposal that's circulating about space, lab space. So that is joint ed. Steve, finance meets tomorrow?
Fine, tomorrow morning, yep. Can I ask you guys a quick question, Susan and Donna? Is there any information that you could share with us on the science lab thing?
Sure. It's really just a feasibility study. Once that's done, then we'll have information.
About, just about like what's going on in the science department?
Oh, that's different.
And why are we even thinking like, because the city councilors, more than one have asked me like about it, and I, I don't know a thing about it.
Yeah, the lab, I mean, basically, the, the scenario is that the labs, they're 15 years old, and in the science world?
Yep.
That's pretty old, that they haven't been updated. So really, the, the proposal was, how can we upgrade our science labs? How can we make that become state of the art? Given the focus that we had in our STEM area across the district, how do we now bring this, the labs to high school? It's kind of up to speed. So that's really what, that's the, that's what's being pioneered.
So somewhere, is there a, like a white paper on what updating means, and like what we have now versus what we're looking for, like a-
That's what the feasibility study would do.
Yeah.
We could, we could talk more about that, too, in CIE if you want to, and I can, and we can talk about the work that we've been putting together.
I was just curious, I know, like, I just know that they want to talk about it next week at joint ed, and I don't know a thing about it. So I didn't know if there was any information that even started this discuss, surely you guys have had discussions, so I'm assuming that there's some sort of thinking-
Yeah, I can bring some information.
Or just, just an email beforehand, like, this is what we're thinking, this is what we see, just, just in background, I don't need-
I think Mike has shared periodically the challenge of trying to fit the number of kids that want to take lab courses into the labs that we've got, that's, that's one issue.
So that's more labs, but that's different than updating labs, so that's-
It could be both.
It's both. It's really, we have way too many sections for the labs that we have, and, and we have outdated facilities in them, so.
Okay.
There, there's, there's been a proposal put forward that's still in very rough draft form, but it would give you an idea.
Thank you, appreciate that.
And it's, I mean, we're really looking at something that probably is five to seven years old, so it's, I mean, we're at the very beginning of the process. But I, I recognize that you get information, too.
CIE, curriculum, instruction, and expectations. Dave, we had a conversation about homework, but I wasn't there for the whole conversation.
You were there for actually most of it, we, we didn't last much longer than you did, but, you know, we were talking about homework, and Angela and Susan said that the leadership team is kind of at the point where we're ready to get together and start that conversation, and how big that conversation becomes, because we started talking about homework, and I guess the leadership team started about homework, but realizing that it's more about improving practice and getting very specific with practice. Talked about the new high school principal being very much on board and experienced with standards-based instruction, professional development, and that was a big part of it, and how just, we looked at some of the research, talked about how there's a wide variety of findings, some which are opinions, some which are more findings, and that homework does not mean the same thing across the board, so that's, and that you guys said you try to come to the next meeting with some sort of leadership team thinking around a calendar or a plan to have that discussion, to how to frame that discussion. That was good.
Yeah, it was a good conversation.
Which subcommittee was that?
That was curriculum, instruction, and expectations. That is the end of our meeting. We will not be going into executive session through Sean's absence tonight.
Okay. I move to close the meeting.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Do you sign this? No?
Could I sign? Once it's bad together, it goes back to all of the checks.
Anyway, we need another signature.
We need another signature.
Yes, because Sean's not here.
What I do is once they're all finalized, and the actual warrant comes down, you have to cut the checks. So there's like all these checks.
Literally.
Yes. Have a wonderful day tomorrow.